Good evening, everyone. Let's begin tonight's conference. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing to honor our former service. Good evening, and thank you for coming tonight. Now, please note that there will be only one meeting in November to be held on Thursday or the seventeenth. Any special days may be called when necessary. That's called upon the department heads. Again, Mr. Johnson, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing on the agenda, just a couple of things I'd like to remind people of. Saturday is National Prescription Drug Take Back Day. We work with the DEA on taking back drugs. Even though we do it every day, it's a special day. If anybody has unwanted, unused, or expired drugs, please bring them to headquarters or we'll dispose of them safely and properly. Also, Monday, I just want to remind everybody, children will be out trick or treating, and please be careful when you drive. Also, people who are receiving the children, who give out candy and other goodies, please leave your lights on and your garborys clear of debris. And parents, please accompany your children, especially the younger ones. Also, I just want to remind people, it's now dark as soon as, so please lock your doors. Turn your lights on. There is still a spring going on off of us for burglaries. There's been a couple occupied burglaries over the last night. So, and they usually find the windows open, sometimes the windows. So, please make sure everything's secure when you go to bed. Keep a good outside lighting on, and any issues, please follow me along right away. Any notices, all happening.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, thank you. Fire Chief, Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. The Fire Department has nothing on the formal agenda. I would also just like to thank the board and the residents as well for attending our annual fire prevention day last Sunday. It was a great success with great weather. And again, I'd just like to thank everyone here, as well as all the residents who attended and supported the fire department. I also just have some safety points. We are getting into the colder months, regardless of the temperature in here right now. So, I would just like to remind everybody, everyone, please check your boilers, have them checked and serviced before turning them on for the season. That can lead to carbon monoxide alarms in the house, so please also check your carbon monoxide batteries. And also, the leaves are starting to fall, so we strongly recommend to remind everybody, please don't hark on top of posled leaves. This can lead to an unfortunate car fire. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to compliment you and the team on the fire prevention day. The families had a lot of fun. It was very informative as well. I learned a couple of things again. It was great. And also, I want to thank you. I know we had two accidents, we had to expedite people from the cars, I think, maybe three of them recently. So, you guys did a good job. I think there was one, I think, was it last night?
One last night, one this morning.
One this morning.
Yes, so we've had an uptick in auto accidents, which we seem to have throughout the year. The police department, the fire department worked hand in hand along with the NYU Land Go Amulets to rectify the situation as quickly as possible. So, thank you to the Commissioner as well as the rest of the GCPD. And again, we can't stress this enough, you've heard us say this a hundred times over, the Commissioner and the board, please, everyone, slow down, we're driving through the village. We all live here, our loved ones live here, please take the phone with you guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Yeah, that was a great fire prevention day. I thought you did a great job.
Thank you very much. Glad it was a great turnout. Hopefully, everyone went to do some hands-on activities. The kids definitely learned some stuff. Glad to see everyone out there. So, again, thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Next, Treasury Ivey Wu, is she on Zoom?
Yes.
Good evening, Ivey.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. So, tonight, there is no agenda, I N's department, there are a few budget transfers requested by Mr. Swasey, and he'll go over those transfers right along.
That's it? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next is Building Superintendent Joseph G. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The Build Department doesn't have anything on the agenda this evening, but just wanted to give the board a quick update as far as the Build Department inspections and intakes from prior year to current present. Right now, we've taken about fifteen hundred applications for the building permits. But it's been pretty consistent from prior years, about fifteen hundred to date. So, just want to thank my staff, they're doing some great work, and now Build Department continues to drive as far as applications coming in, so thank you.
And that's commercial?
That's actually residential and commercial, combined of fifteen hundred applications, yes.
And how many typically was it?
I wouldn't split the difference on that. It's usually pretty consistent as far as residential. I would say between seven hundred to eight hundred residential, and then the commercial, a lot of commercial between Seventh and Franklin. So, it's pretty consistent throughout the years. We do have specialty projects, there's about twelve special projects going on right now. Langone, five-five-five, Triple A Buildings doing some work, Cathedral. So, it's been pretty steady as far as the construction in the village. As you all may see, there's a truck on every road in the village, so it's pretty consistent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Recreation Commissioner Wu.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. Recreation has three items on the agenda tonight. First one, number nine, is an agreement with Adelphi University for use of their swimming pool for our winter swim lessons. Adelphi has been very generous with us. There is normally a four thousand dollar rental fee for the pool, however, they waived that for us, and we need to pay just the staff costs for their lifeguards. Runs out to about twelve hundred dollars for the season, and we anticipate anywhere from one hundred and fifty to one hundred and seventy-five children getting swim lessons in this program. Number ten, we have a change order on the Edgemere Park Basketball and Tennis Court rehabilitation. Unfortunately, when we did the court, the contractor was given an incorrect template for the pickleball court, and we wanted two courts over there, he had only painted one. So, we requested a change order, and we now have two fully functional pickleball courts at Edgemere Park. The amount of the change order was sixty-five hundred dollars. And those courts are open and available, and equipment is there at the park. Number eleven, we have an award a bid for perennials, bulbs, and annuals. This item was originally bid back in March, but for some reason, we never received a tabulation sheet, it just went through the cracks, and it's the time of year that we have to buy the bulbs, so we'd like to award that bid tonight. Vendor has said they will maintain the prices that they quoted that can match, and it is a cost of approximately thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, and this covers over forty-seven thousand tool of bulbs that'll be planted between now and the wintertime. Those are all the items we have this evening. If anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Get those bulbs fast.
Well, does the Adelphi Swimming Pool tell us if you have a swim there?
Well, these are lessons, Tom. We used to run an adult lesson at one o'clock, one of the last sessions, but we haven't had any demand for that. One of the things we're going to do this year, we're trying to arrange for a lifeguarding course. If we do a lifeguarding course over the winter, we hopefully will have a few more guards for the pool that we use in the summer. Be more employees available, so we can take that.
If there was a demand, you think that'd be open in the adult swim, because Charlie Jeller would love to do that.
I'd love to.
Well, the test of that would like to swim.
I'd love to be polite, it would be great. If a combination.
I think we could both use that lesson, but. Actually, Adelphi does have a program where you can take a membership and go into the pool, almost like a health club. So, if you are interested in winter swimming, especially some of the master swimmers, I know they like that, since they renovated the pool over there, it's a wonderful facility. We could certainly look into that.
That'd be great.
Tell me about the demand for the swim lessons. Are you able to accommodate all the children in the village who are signed up or request to be signed up for the lessons, or is there a waiting list, are people kept away? What's the situation with regard to that?
We typically fill the lessons, and we might have one or two kids in each session for a waiting list. It used to be even worse, because there weren't quite as many activities on the weekends, but Saturday mornings is one of the prime times for soccer, lacrosse, basketball, you know, whatever sport they're doing, and we have seen less demand over the past few years for the Saturday morning lessons. My suspicion is we'll probably fill, out of the twelve lessons we do, we'll probably fill ten of them, and we'll probably be short on one or two.
Thank you.
Paul, question for you. The tree program, I know that we're going to be putting trees in the fall, what's the status? Is it finished? Is it ongoing?
You will see in your next meeting, a request from our department to award the bid for the planting of the trees. We have one hundred and twenty-two trees going in. The bids were just opened last week. As you all know, finance and purchasing is a little short-staffed right now, and things kind of got pushed back. But we have a good vendor, it's Northport Tree Corporation. They've worked with us before, they are a solid company, they provide good stock, and they gave us a price of about forty-one thousand dollars, and our estimated price was fifty-two thousand, so we did very well on pricing. I spoke with Bob from Northport Tree, and he indicated he will do everything he can to get them in by the end of the planting season, which is usually between December fifteenth and December twenty-second. If he cannot get them in by then, he will hold them till early spring, we will keep the same price and the same stock. Because as with some of the other growers, we do go out and we inspect the trees, and we tag the individual trees that we want, and they keep them for us. And dovetailing that, also at that meeting, we believe we'll be asking you to approve a bid for removal of trees. We have a hundred and thirty-four trees that we're going to have to take out, and a hundred and fifteen of those are ash trees, which we've discussed the ash tree problem, you know, prior meetings. And we're starting to take down the big ones on the thoroughfare, so we're going to try to get them off of the busy streets, New York Park Road, Nassau Boulevard, Franklin, Washington, Stewart, Clinton. And then we're going to start going through the village for the next set of large trees, and we'll probably be out for a tree contract again in the spring for removals. That's an update where we are on trees.
Is there any update on the children's New Year's Eve party at the fieldhouse?
We're working on that. We have a couple of ideas. We were hopeful to get a theater group in to put on a performance, and unfortunately, somebody swooped in and took them from us at the last minute. So, we're looking at a couple of alternatives, including potentially a film of some sort, or some live-action jugglers, clowns, unicyclists, and some sort of a little giveaway goody-bag kind of thing. We're working on it.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Paul. Next, Gary Fishburg, Village Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing on the agenda, but one item, that license agreement for one-twenty Franklin was submitted at the last meeting, but there are still a couple of things that need to be gotten in connection with it. They sent us an insurance certificate, but we need a couple of changes made in the insurance certificate. They also sent a deposit of ten thousand dollars to cover any expenses that may be incurred by the village on a going-forward basis to the area being licensed. And once we get the insurance certificate, there's also one other item, they're looking for an opinion from the village that they use at least part of the building as an ambulatory surgery center is permissible. And we believe that under the village law, under the, I think it's the CP zone, under that zone, an ambulatory surgery center is permissible, so long as there's no overnight stays in the center. So, that should be, hopefully, wrapped up shortly.
Next is Building Superintendent Swasey, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees, members of the public. Mayor, I have three items on the public works this evening, and then three items under the Board of Trustees. I want to start with the public works items first. Item number six, on the consent calendar, we need a transfer for a change order in the amount of one thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-four cents to the library children's room cap account from the library reserve for capital improvements in order to pay that change order. And then the second part of the resolution is to actually approve change order number one, which was submitted by the awarded contractor to prefer construction for circulation desk and office changes at a total cost of one-three-two-zero-two-and-sixteen cents. Item number seven, if you walk in the village, I know you see scaffolding all around it, we have a report going on. So, this is for a change order submitted by Cornerstone Construction, the awarded contractor to make exterior repairs to the planning walls on ground level of the building's wall at a cost of fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. And item number eight, there's authorization to transfer nine-three-hundred billion dollars to engineer maintenance software from contingent to the annual renewal of the ARC JAS licensing provided by the environment and systems resources, otherwise known as ASR, for here at the end of October thirtieth through, this year through October twenty-ninth, next year, two-thousand twenty-three. Under the Board of Trustees, we have three items. The first is the cost estimator. This is to engage consultant Westman Construction Company in. As you may recall, this is the, we had an RFP found earlier, first RFP for the same purpose, cost estimation, and Westman Construction was the low bidder then. We put it out again recently, and we modified it based on input from the Saint Paul's Committee and yourself. We modified the second RFP to include facadeism and to also repeat the request for demolition and also for adaptive reuse. And in the second RFP, we made the aim a little clearer so that the environmental costs associated with these choices would also be in there. It was in the first RFP as well, we just made the language a little clearer. Also, for the second RFP, we looked up, we found eight new vendors. We sent that eleven in all, two of them are repeats from the first RFP. So, we got that three requests. I also want to mention that they did go out on the Contract Reporter, which is the online New York State tool we use to advertise our bids to the tri-state area, actually, to the world, and ninety-two people viewed it, so it had a lot of good exposure, ninety-two online and the eleven we sent out. Anyway, Westman again received this proposal, that this between the first RFP and this one's fifteen thousand dollars, that was the increase for the facadeism choice, that was not on the first one, the first one's fifty-four. These second two items in the RFP are the temporary speed bumps. The Traffic Commission, based on the results of the traffic studies in the numbered streets, they want the village to go out and to find temporary speed bumps. It says bumps here, I think, there'll be speed bumps, and they will, to be used on Fourth Street and the numbered streets, they'll be portals, we can put them in for a while, assess their effectiveness, and then move them around. So, we come back with some cost for the November seventeenth agenda. The second item is crosswalk modifications on Seventh Street. The same study did include some considerations on making the crosswalks on Seventh Street a little safer, cross, by using what they call bump outs, where the crosswalk becomes shorter and the people on either ends are more visible. So, both of these charters are to go out and get crosswalk entry back to the RFP seventeenth agenda. That's all I have, no questions.
With regard to the two traffic items, four and five, I want to thank Karen for redrafting those. Thank you.
Any comments here, board? Okay, moving on. We'll discuss agenda items right now. Any questions and comments on agenda items? On the agenda items? This one's important, state your name, Embrus.
Party number three again. How can a cost estimator do a job accurately if he has no idea of the timing and nature of the job? Last night, we learned that the timing of design and then environmental work could take years before construction begins. So, isn't it kind of backwards to do the estimating before you know what you're doing?
I just don't understand the question.
You don't know? You don't understand the question?
No, you're talking about the schedule? How the schedule affects the cost?
Last night, we heard from Thomas Eddy people, and they said you had to have design work that would take perhaps a year, and environmental impact study could take another year or two. And so, isn't premature to be estimating work, and then there's facadeism, and there's partial demolition?
In order to determine, for example, if the building can be reused or repurposed, or if it has to be demolished, or if you just keep a portion of it, right? That's part of the design process, right? An estimator based on the information we have right now, that I see from the committee, for example, with the adaptive reuse, any good estimate can take those drawings, which is schematic drawings and stuff, to begin an estimate, so you know, for example, is it going to cost us fifty million dollars or seventy-five million dollars, right, to repurpose the building, or does it cost us ten million dollars to demolish the building? We don't know. Again, that estimate has to be done somehow, it has to be done by a professional cost estimator, and that's what's been, we've been seeking this now for months, and this is the purpose tonight, to look at this.
Is the estimator approved, the estimator working at the same time that the design people are working?
Well, no, the fact is that the estimator, once he understands the project, he will also determine, for example, the schedule, right, with the design professionals that we have. So, they work hand in hand, this process they have to go through. I can't just say that it's two years to do this and three years to do that to the estimate unless you have a very specific timeline, and we don't have any.
Well, I think it was kind of shocking, maybe to other people in the audience, that the whole process before actual construction takes place could be years. And so, just, I was very surprised, I'm not a professional within this area, but I was surprised that we're looking at, at one point, the Thomas Eddy guy said environmental studies could take years. He said a year, two, maybe longer. That's not very accurate.
No. I think it was the Thomas Eddy group, it was the attorney who was speaking about environmental impact?
Yeah. He said it could take a year, two, or even longer.
It depends on what you find, right? The environmental impact.
So, anyway, I just wanted to observe that, and I think the fact that that's going to take so long is an argument for demolition, which is the route wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you like to just comment? Ralph, tell me if I have this right, I haven't been in any RFPs in another field. We're not allocating, we're not paying who we'd be awarding the contractor. We only engage them money-wise, once we get all the specs and all the facts and the different options, and we also have the option of canceling them at any time, because I've won some RFPs where it got canceled, at a major pharmaceutical, for example. So, I just want to be clear that we're not, we're allocating money but not spending money at this time, because I think some people have a misperception that we're spending money.
So, the actual expenditure starts when you give the orders received, so you have the fine scope of work. So, we have to sit down and roll in what we want. As Mr. Salem alluded to, this isn't like a snapshot of everything, there are different aspects to this proposal, there's, you know, buildings are no entity, it has a certain size, square footage, structure, so they can estimate things like demolition, environmental impact, they can move ahead on different speeds, on different parts of this at the same time. So, the final part, what we do with the programming, moving the wall here and there, from the presentations I've seen, you don't have to know that this is going to be through a dance studio specifically, or a children's play area, something like that. Basically, the programming, while it's important, it's really teary to finish it, so I think they can do a lot with what's already existing, and that would be like the last piece, and they also have existing financial floors, they could take in all the information and use it, or like to prepare, and these are estimates we remember.
Yeah, my clarification is that they're not engaged to proceed in order to pay them for all this.
They don't, they don't, so all the specs are in, all the facts are in, from the committee, and then we can engage them, or we postpone, or we cancel them. At that point, that's when we decide when money is spent, am I correct?
The money's spent when you complete the project, and they won't stop the process to actually engage them.
Okay. Here is a lot of people who are misinformed on that.
If here the engagement's not a big amount, they could be six months later.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to actually remove this from the consent calendar for discussion. I'd like to make a motion to do that, I don't know if it's appropriate now or after citizens' comments. I'd like to make a motion to remove item number three from the consent calendar for trustee discussion. Paul and Peter.
Hi. We're in discussion again?
All right, well, I wanted to, well, the trustee discussion, I'd like to make, you know, statements on this item. And first of all, I want to thank everyone on the Saint Paul's Committee for all of their hard work. I'm just glad to see the Gorden City High School presentation on adaptive reuse, and while I was unable to attend last month's meeting, I appreciate that it was posted online and I had an opportunity, as I hope all residents will, to watch it in its entirety. I'd like to take a few moments to explain why I and others feel at some point this does need to be done, but we are not ready. And for those who may be wondering why not yet, I'll just share some of my reasons. The facade presentation last night, we will release, and thank you, I see he's in the audience today for all of your hard work, and as he explained to us last night, he has not received the detailed input on facade that he received on adaptive reuse. And he explained he's only really gotten snippets on the facade plan. He had worked hard to put something together, and it was a very nice presentation, put a roof on it, though, that wasn't actually the one he's going to recommend. I think it's clear this facade is a work in progress, and I think everyone was working on it. Frank McDonough, McDonough who was there, also described in the process of facade that we're, this is just the first step. And we had some younger residents, parents with swimmers, and it was great to see them come and giving their feedback. They actually came to both the meet and greet, and they also went to the Saint Paul's meeting, and they were making a pitch for a pool as part of this facade complex. And I know Frank McDonough was inviting them to Tuesday's meeting to speak more about it. He also mentioned he's heard input from seniors who would like this smaller pool. It seems that the planning for the facade really just started in the last few weeks, and to my knowledge, the outreach hasn't really occurred to the sports programs in schools that I'm sure will be interested in giving input on this. And it's clear on the facade, we need more time before getting a cost estimate. As far as the adaptive reuse, we saw significant progress between that first town hall meeting at Claude Hall and the Gorden City High School presentation, and I thank the volunteers for all that work that they've been doing. There are still large amounts of unused space. I'm not clear on whether the committee's considering reducing the size of the building for this reason or not. It was at the high school meeting that I first heard Frank McDonough's idea of having a club as part of this building with the dining facility. And I understand that operating costs are something that's still being discussed, and I think it's great that's being discussed by the committee, because that's going to be an important piece of the financial question the village is going to have to look at, what's being built and what the operating costs will be going forward, whether it's a dining facility or a gym program. So, I understand that's being still explored, and while it's explored, it could change some of the uses. Again, work is ongoing, and we still need more time before getting a cost estimate. Lastly, on DEMO, we are still awaiting a presentation on DEMO, and I'm unaware of the specifics of the historical demolition that Cosmo speaks of, and I don't think we've gotten community input on these demolition choices that may be made in the future. So, I think that's something also, it's premature right now to be getting a cost estimate. The question that Adam was raising is what are we getting here and what are we spending money on? And I think that's something that's, I think a lot of residents think, this is it, we're about to get the price, and then we're going to go to a vote, and it's going to be over. But, you know, if you look at, I'll just share a sentence here from an email from Lloyd Westerman, who is the owner of- Westerman, who is the owner of the business who's being proposed as the consultant here, and this was just on October 19th, and he writes, describing the work they'll be doing, "Our approach is from the standpoint of giving the village appropriate budget numbers to help them analyze what to do with the building. We plan on doing only the most conceptual design so that we can, could put numbers on it. This is especially in light of the fact that the programming and use of any of the schemes has not been determined by the village." And if you look to the RFP that's before us today, it states that "we will conclude the report with possible options for renovations and master planning for future phases." So, I just wanted to put that out there, because seeing that, I think there was information kind of going out that we're getting cost estimates, that we're going to be able to go to residents, so on, and have a vote on, but that's not what's before us. Just as another smaller point, the proposal makes no mention of, you know, another example of why we're not quite ready yet, of the green building, I understand was requested by the building department, consideration of solar, and these types of things, as we all know, will impact the cost of the construction, but also impact the operating costs going forward. So, I think that's the type of detail we want to discuss and have plans on before we go out for a cost estimate. I'm almost done, also. I and other trustees are really grateful for all the work, and I see a lot of you here, and thank you for coming, and thank you for everything you've been doing. And we are looking to be more involved in this process, and we think it would be helpful for us to be. For that reason, what I was going to propose tonight is that we broaden the committee, now it's a mayor's committee, to be a board committee. And I think the idea of the liaison isn't quite working out so great. So I think if there were a board committee, we'd all be more involved, and I think it's good for the committee and good for the trustees as well.
You know, I think, I think you raised some questions that should be answered by, I've been attending all the meetings, so I'm well informed. And I think it would be important for those people that are working on the committee to answer maybe some of the questions that she poses, so that she realizes maybe what work's been done and how we're moving forward. But, just to be clear, my understanding is, no spending will occur till all the facts are in and the final results. So I'm in no rush to move, move the committee forward before that's, that's, you know, taken care of.
The vote tonight is to authorize spending.
The vote tonight is authorize?
The amount is.
No, the vote.
It's for this, it's going to happen in seven weeks, for them to do this work within seven days. So we are voting tonight to spend money.
Well, it's contingent, right, upon, yeah, it has to be, we can change that. On this, on the final results of the specs and the facts and the alternatives.
I think we're on the same page, we don't have that yet.
Yeah, but we're not spending yet. We can change that.
So, I didn't want to interrupt you, trustee Flanagan, but unless things have changed, I know my first go around with the board, when trustee asked to remove something from the calendar, I don't remember it ever going to a vote that it was a courtesy and they could have it removed. And then, the discussion that would take place, would take place after the consent calendar was passed on, and then those items that were removed would be discussed individually. So that's, that's my understanding of how the procedure worked in the past. I think we're going to move on a pace that.
I think we had started this session already, so I don't know if everyone's okay if there's any procedural issue with completing this.
You know, I think you had some questions that you wanted answered, so maybe some of the committee can answer some of the questions that Mary had, so that it's not longer.
Before that, Tom.
Oh, sorry.
I think there's a fundamental misconception as to what a cost estimator does. And that is, simply stated, they have a building that has to be inherently reviewed. So you then have to make a determination as to what you have. You then make measurements, value review the building, you quantify what the size of it is. And then, after you quantify that, you put together plans, you put together information, and from that information, you can have different iterations. So the problem that we have here is that without a cost estimator, none of the questions that have been asked as to what this cost can be answered. When you wind up building, in my case, I built a house from dirt, and when you do that, you have to conceptualize what you're going to have, how many spare feet you have, what doors you're going to have, in order to get an estimate. So, in fact, before my house ever made it to architectural view, I was able, through essentially a cost estimator, to know what it is going to cost to move forward. In this particular case, the documentation that is necessary, for which the cost estimator should be retained, is to do the determination as to what you have. Once you have that information, you can change it, you can amend it, you can massage it, whether you want to keep the entire structure, non-structure, or whatever else. You were kind enough to provide an example of demolition. Well, unfortunately, you can't figure out demolition unless, in fact, you quantify. And in the documentation that you provided the board, it was what the preliminary tasks are, what the regulatory constraints are. It says nothing about, we have to figure out what the uses are, it says what you need to do programmatically in order to move to the next step. By not retaining an estimator, effectively, this process is stopped. Why move forward? Because if you can't answer the question of what is the possibility and/or uses of the building, and what does it cost, we really have a situation of paralysis by analysis. I lived through that with other boards for many years, in which said, we need more information, we need more information. We have a building! You've got to measure the building, you have to see what the mass is, how many CMUs you have in the building. If you want to take it away and demolish it, how much does it cost? Where is the area that you're going to take the refuse, the debris to? How many trucks you're going to use? If you don't get the information presently, you can't move forward.
Bruce, I want to make a comment. The concept that Mary put forth is, she's making it very ambiguous, which is not accurate. As you say, there's a finite dimension to the building. Building has dimensions, it's existing. You can take measurements, you can determine what the materials are, you can determine what you're going to take away, what you're going to add, it's very logical. And this is only the first step. This is a schematic design estimate. That's what we have, we have a schematic design for adaptive reuse, there's a schematic now for facade. Demolition is pretty simple, right? You go back, look at the building, take off the quantities, and there it is again, right? This is a schematic design estimate. Typically, in any contract, there's another estimate, after design development, there's another estimate done by a cost estimator, which fine tunes that estimate, because at that point, you have additional information to analyze, right? Now you're talking about putting in potential plumbing fixtures, lighting fixtures, all the other accessories that go to a building. The final analysis, the final estimate is done by the contractor, so it goes out to bid. That's after the construction designs, documents are issued for bid. So, there are three levels of estimating here that must occur before you have a final result on the building. However, as, as President Trino says, you have to start somewhere. You have to understand that, okay, what does it cost for adaptive reuse based on the information we have? What does it cost to do a facade project with the information we have? And what do we do for demolition, right? That's the easiest one of all. That's why when this committee's set up, their task is to think of the most difficult possibility, which is adaptive reuse. Secondly, is facadeism. Third is demolition. It's a very logical process. I can't make it any simpler.
One thing I'd like to add, this has been a bit of a process, right? We're smarter now than we were a month ago, or wanted to vote.
Hopefully, yes.
I think we are, and, but I still think there are some open holes here that should be lit. Not like anybody here who disagreed with the new cost estimate.
Terry, you're right. Terry, the cost estimator is not going to avoid, the members of the committee, and including the trustees, are going to have input, with the cost estimator on a weekly basis. And I invite every trustee participant to understand what you're paying for, right? Because I know, I do this for a living, I've done this for many, many years, I work with the cost estimator, and he will expect documentation of us on a weekly basis, otherwise it cannot be his challenge. It's impossible, right? So again, the RFP went out the first time, it went out the second time, Ralph Spazza did the third, they vetted everything, I can't see them doing a better job than what they've done.
I think the first.
Any comments from the audience, please?
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me.
The first one really didn't have no mention of facadeism at all, from what I remember.
I was adding, was that not in the first?
It was added on that.
You made more sense from the second go on.
I know, but you look at the RFP, and there's a lot on adaptive reuse, and by the way, the committee did an excellent job on that, putting that all together. But there's, as Mary mentioned, there's, I think, some, there has to be more outreach on that, in terms of the use of the rooms. But the facadeism was just briefly mentioned. And again, the presentation last night certainly gave us a lot of information, but I think, I know there's some town halls that are listed on November 2nd, I thought the 2nd was November 17th, hopefully it isn't, because we have the 4th. It is the 16th, okay. Then we might need more, to find more information. I mean, going to the meetings has been informative, I'm glad we've finally been able to do that. I wish this process had occurred a little earlier.
Well, let me explain about this, and everybody keeps saying that the meeting was secretive, they were not secretive. The committee had to have enough time by themselves to understand what the process was and work before they could present anything. It takes time to do that. You're not giving the resident volunteers enough time. They did tremendous amount of work beginning this year. They talked about facadeism, they talked about demolition, and they decided to go first and do the adaptive reuse, which it was the most complicated approach to the project. It's very simple. I mean, you guys are making a big deal out of nothing, I think. I think you really should move forward on this. And, you know, again, we have all the volunteers in the audience, I think they should, they should tell you what they think.
I don't think you want to.
I think, I think one thing, since I've been attending almost everything, the outreach has been pretty impressive. And, for example, I think it would be important for the committee to talk about some of the outreach that they've had, so, for example, they've contacted the GCAA and things like that.
It's documented, it's on the website, it's all documented.
So, the next thing is, everything's there for us to look at, you can download it. It's pretty impressive, and I think that they've made great progress over the last, since, since July, obviously.
Before we go to last minutes, in what we're doing, do we have any trustees who want to discuss this further, or is it, is it clear?
Clear in what way? Clear on what we're trying to do, or?
Yeah, clear, what the estimator is going to be doing for this phase of work.
Makes sense, but I'm with, I agree with trustee Pegan, I think it's all premature at this point, right? And Tom, to your comment, right?
Just like the more to, hey. To engage them.
To engage them at this point.
Yeah, we're not engaging it, that's the only.
To Tom, we're, we're all raising the spending money, right? Mary went through this, right? My second point to you is this, all this outreach, and we raised this several quarters ago to talk about documentation on how we got there, right? Still haven't seen it. So if there's outreach that's been documented, it'd be great to share with the board, just to see what happens.
And I think what you should do is ask for that.
It was asked for.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
By email, we don't have it.
I'm just, I'm just saying that I think a lot of the questions that you might have are already on the website, if you can.
When's the, when's the website looked at it, right? We'd like to see more of it.
So, let them know what else you want to see right now, so that, I think that's important. So, they keep saying, if they have any questions, please ask them. I'm just, you know, as the liaison, and you're being one of them, I think you should step up and ask them what you still need.
Tom, we had.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Tom, please, we actually had a meeting, we went through, we asked for permission, it's mitigated, right? Karen has the minutes, and it's what we have here. I'm not sure what else you need to do.
What else you need, that's, you're not, you don't have, that's what I'm curious about. I mean, I have everything I need, but you might not have everything.
So if you have, so Tom, if you have any material, the documents, proceedings that took place over the last 10 months, details around outreach, requests from residents, right? What we really outlined, I'd love to see, because I do not have it.
Okay, so I think it's important for the committee to get to you, which I've heard at your meeting, which you weren't able to attend, the outreach that they're doing. And I think the other thing is that.
And Tom, just, just, no, 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 but, just, no, no, let me finish, just, this is about multiple times. I instructed this board, and when I took this position, I instructed everybody that I teach on Tuesday nights, your meeting is Tuesday nights.
It's not my meeting.
No, no, I told, no, I told the committee this, right? So, the fact that I'm not there is because I'm employed by New York University.
Yeah, I understand.
So, this isn't a question of me shirking anything or not attending is out of the choice.
I'm not suggesting.
Because I have class.
I'm not suggesting.
Okay? So I just want to be clear with that, Tom. No, no, it's me, right? And your comment out meeting is on and asking for it, right? And you said that they asked where I was, and last time we need.
No, I didn't ask for it.
No, no, you did.
No, I said.
You just did.
I said, I know you couldn't attend.
You said they asked where you were, Tom.
No, I didn't say that.
So, Bob, I didn't ask where you were.
No, we didn't ask where you were, because we knew.
I didn't.
We knew where you were, and Larry, as I said, the night that we looked over the plans, we'll meet with you whenever you want. You know, we meet with people during the day, during the night, and Kathy has all the research, but there's so much of it, she needs to sit with you.
Excellent.
And that's why we invited trustee Flanagan into meetings, but, you know, she hasn't come. So, we're, we're here all the time, you know.
Let's, let's have the trustees' discussion.
So Larry, I'm not suggesting, not intending to go to a meeting, I said you were not able to be at the meeting. Big difference. So please don't accuse me of that, all right? So I think this, the thing though, is, I think we're nailing it now, any information that we still need, I have some of the information that you just brought up, but I've been at the meeting, so I get it. So I think you want to make sure that the committee is answering anything you need on that. And I'm in no rush for the committee to finish their task, let them continue, continue to get input, as Mary said. And they've given their phone number out, they're doing everything, they've been reaching out, they've redone some plans, I think they're trying really hard to bring it to a conclusion. And then, the cost estimator can, based on the facts, can do some estimating so that the village can start looking at the residents of what is this going to actually cost. So that's where I'm coming from.
Any other comments from the trustees?
No, I just would like to hear about the outreach, particularly to the sports teams and athletics and coaches and stuff like that, you might have talked to, things like that.
Is there anyone there that can answer that?
Around nonsense.
Yes, the outreach has nothing to do with the building. A cost estimator looks at a building. There are different phases of the process, but it's a simple function. If this board decides that it doesn't want to have a cost estimator, and wants to adjourn it again, and again, and again, then you're going to wind up having a process in the next election cycle. It's real simple, because when the board decided that it was not going in August to approve a cost estimator, there were five trustees. Five trustees had the opportunity, if they chose, to change the process and say, we're going to go to every meeting. They have the opportunity to go to the committee and say, we want to meet with you. Each trustee had, if they wanted to get information, any one of a number of people to do it. Right now, without a cost estimator, the process is going to grind to a halt. If that's the intent in the issue of trying to kick the can down the road, we should have a degree of transparency and say, hey, we don't want to do this until the next election cycle, we don't want to do it at all. But, the cost estimator's sole function is to do an inventory of a building, and that's it. I sent around two emails to the trustees with regard to what an estimation of a building I sent around two emails to the trustees with regard to what an estimation of a building looks like. In both of those emails, I said, "If you have any questions, call me." I got no responses. Quite candidly, unless you want to find out what is in that building, how much volume it has, and what are the potentials as far as the options that are being prepared, you gotta move forward. If you don't want to move forward, just tell us you don't want to move forward, and tell the committee, you know?
You can't say that, because we have town halls coming up, okay? So, can we not look at these town halls? Next one being demolition. The one on the 16th, I think is the conglomeration of everything. And at that point, begin to authorize spending money. What is the big delay of this previous?
The difficulty is...
You're by a procrastination.
No, it's on. I'm just not talking loudly. There is nothing that you're going to learn at the next meeting with regard to cost estimating, and the need for a cost estimator.
Just so it's clear, we're not looking to learn about cost estimating. We're looking to see our plans what the village wants further developed so that we can get better prices.
That makes no sense, because you have to start off with, what is the building?
I mean, I'm not gonna argue with you over semantics, but...
No, it's not semantics, it's a process scenario, a process you have to go through. Every object that they did is, they're a part of this process. Otherwise, you can't get a good result for the residents. We're doing this for the residents, Mary.
Electoral...
Please, understand this. This has been kicked around too long. This is ridiculous, right? Any more comments from the trustees, please? Okay, let's go, uh...
Well, I, I agree with Mary and Larry and Terry that I don't understand how you can do a cost estimate when there's no finalized proposal. When I was at the meeting at the high school, there was a free-flowing discussion as to whether you would have the Kelly Gym or the McDonough Theater, or both. And whether you would have a club in the middle of the two, or you would have a garden. And maybe not, maybe you just have two basketball courts. It seems to me that the potential proposal is very fluid. And I don't want to have taxpayers' funds spent estimating different proposals. I want a specific adaptive reuse proposal. Then, I would be happy to join in, voting to spend funds to get an estimate so we could put that on the ballot for the community vote. At this point, I think the discussions are not finalized. The proposal certainly isn't finalized. We don't even know how much space is going to be used. And I think it's all premature at this point to start spending taxpayer money. And I think all that will happen, if the board votes for this tonight and decides to spend this $69,000, is that we'll get cost estimates, and then we'll have to get supplemental cost estimates, and then we'll have to get a final proposal, and we'll have to get cost estimates on that. Specific proposal should be made, both in the area of adaptive reuse and in the area of facadeism, before we start spending taxpayer monies to get estimates. I don't want estimates of Kelly Gems that will never be built. I don't want estimates of Broadway Theaters that will never be built. I want a specific proposal, and then I'll be happy to move along with cost estimates. And that's my position.
Thank you, trustee DeGale. Any other trustees? Over to the floor to the residents, and the tenants. Say your name and address, please.
Ryan Orney, 147 Hampton Road. I'll start with, I was a person who reached out to all of the athletic organizations in the village. I talked to heads of the men's association, Garden City Boys Lacrosse, Tradition Lacrosse, which is the girls lacrosse program in town, Garden City Centennials, GCIA. When I talked to all of these groups, just to correct trustee Carter Flanagan, when I talked to them, I said, "What do you need? What do you want? And what do you wish for?" And keep in mind, you need, need, want, and wish for three different projects. Every adaptive use, a facadeism project, and a demolition project. They're well aware of the three projects. We discussed all three, what they think they need, what they would want, and what they wish for in all three. I hope that answered your question. It's a strange place, this, because I think I was here in August or September, and the same people who don't want to rush things were demanding a financial plan by the end of September. I, I, I mean, it's baffling that we were having trustees talk about deadlines and financial reports by the end of September 30th. And now, we're not going to fund the RFP to get estimates. Strange. The people, trustees, saying they haven't heard anything in 10 months. They're sitting next to somebody who was on the committee for, for three or four months. This is really strange stuff. This is why you don't get things done for 30 years. Nonsense, absolute nonsense. People dedicating time, going out and talking to people, having, not just meetings on Tuesday. And that senior center nearly every Wednesday, giving presentations. POA meetings, special groups, affinity groups. Love to present 5GC meet and greet. I don't think there had been one since June, so we didn't have one. And unfortunately, the last one was the same night as the facade presentation. No problem, meet and greet, we'll do two or three times a week. I said I'd meet with the demolition group, we'll do a financial plan with the demolition group. But how, how are you gonna do a financial plan if you don't have the estimates for demolition? This is nonsense, absolute nonsense. Thank you.
And happy to hear that you did the outreach. Just pass it on to Will Elise and all of us, and that's exactly the type of information we've been looking for. I don't know what their wants, wishes, or...
Hey, I have, don't put, don't put words you won't know. I, I received...
One more second, please.
Hi, I'm Kathy Wazaki, 38 Locust Street.
Patty, you're mine.
And we have, we have given the information out. We, we got a lot of information, which I've said this before, I would say, a lot of times, because Karen gave us a lot of information from the mayor's community meeting a long time ago, the timeline, a long time ago, the P O A, that, that was some of our first information that we went through. The recreation department gave, they had a big, um, a survey, these, the C P O A. We have people coming to our Tuesday night meetings, and you're all welcome to come. Guests come in and tell us from different affinity groups they come, and we hear what they say, and we'll include that in our work on the town halls. If you come to the town halls, we do give handouts. I know, Mary, you were at one of our town halls, and we did have a handout. It said what all the, what, we took all the information from all those papers that we just mentioned, and we put them in categories. And that's how we came up with a community center, an athletic center, things like that. And we, let's see, oh, and you said, oh, in terms of, just the, so, we have collected a lot of information, and we are still doing that, we still have, we still talk to people when we see them. I was at the senior center doing something, I talked to some women, what they want, they just, we just hear people, because they know, because we are working on state halls, they just come up to us and tell us things too, and then we add those ideas to our list. And that's, we, and we give, we update the list, so at any of the meetings, we might have a newer list than you got it, I think you came to the first or second town hall, and we gave that information. We're continuing to hear residents and give them more input. So, we want you to come to our meetings, because that's how we ask our guests, our residents to come to the meetings as guests. Tell us what you want. You can come and listen to, and ask us questions anytime. Or, we will meet with you, and we'll go over, we have a lot of information, you can get it from Karen on the web, the recreation department one is online, the central POA is online. There are a lot, you know, you can get that same information, but we can, you know, we can go over those lists, or we have a long list of what the information we got and where we got it from. So, we can share with you that list, and then you can get whatever information you want. But come to our meetings, and that's where we put everything and writing, and we hand it out, so you can take it home, just like last, last night at the, the people went home with hand, with the new list of anything that might have been added to it, and the schematics of facade. So, that's how we'll all get educated, and we just work together. That's what we need to do.
Thank you, Senator.
Bill Derry, excuse me, Bill Derry, Locust Street, Garden City. I just want to address one myth. I heard this evening from some of the individuals that facadeism is, got discussed last week or the week before, and we should have addressed it sooner. I'd like to make it clear that we've, I've been researching, my assignment on the committee is historic research, facadeism for months, since March. And I've accumulated dozens of articles on the subject, shared it in discussion. I might add, in June, at one of our Tuesdays, late June, I actually engaged Mr. McCloud in a conversation about facadeism, pros and cons of facadeism, and examples of successful facadeism. So, just would like to make it very clear that we, as a committee, did not discover this facadeism, because somebody asked us three weeks ago. It's been on the table from the get-go.
Thank you. Thirty-one minutes, please.
Stephen Aray, 44, Peter Chapman. Mr. Trevino, please give me credit for something.
Hey, Mike, oh.
It's okay, it's good.
It's okay. Please give me, oh, this is it, right? This, what you referred to is from this, correct? It was from trustee Flanagan. Who gave it to him?
It wasn't from me. I learned, cleared this up. I was, he asked me to hand it to you, and I took it from his hand and put it in yours, so...
It was my intent to simply give this out to the trustees as a tool to understand. That's all of us. I wasn't able to attend the rest of the meeting, because I wanted to listen to the unit that you later acted and gave the closing statement to. So, I know you were at both of them, just like I was.
Yes, I was at the...
No, I'm, I'm not debating with you about that. I just want a little bit of credit, at least that I bought this book, I'm not charging the village for it, okay? FDEM didn't get any money, and whatever I paid for this, or whatever I paid for photocopies is on me.
And I read everything that you gave.
Thank you. Well, then, you must have read on page 76 on the salvage, "Unique to the demolition industry is the effect of salvage on the cost of the work. In order to produce a competitive estimate, the demolition estimator must take into account the net values of equipment and materials that will be removed during the process of demolition or dismantlement."
Yes.
What are the historic items that are unique and precious to this building that are to be removed? Why haven't they been listed?
Who is "they"? "They" is the cost, "they" is the cost...
No, 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 no. He doesn't pick out what's important to the village in terms of what's historic.
It's "there", it's "there". That's, that's his role.
His role is to find out what's historic, not this yard's size, not you got...
What is in that building, the very thing you want to do that you gave me, which I read, and which says how important it is for an estimator, is why he has to be retained.
After he knows what the village thinks is important to save, so he can figure out what the estimate is net, because when you remove historic things, there's a net cost to remove, and there may be a balancing in terms of if you sell it going back. These things are important, but I want to make another point.
Can I just answer that for one second? And that is, it is the estimator that quantifies and does the empirical review of the building to document what is in that building.
So, the estimator is an expert in historic...
No, he didn't, I don't know, wait a second. He then said what is there. Once that list is put together, it then becomes the role of either the village, a salvor, or a historian to say, "Here's the list of how many items. Check off the box on which ones are to be salvaged."
When the mayor did his inspection, didn't he list a number of items that could be saved? Didn't he list the stained glass windows? Didn't the organ be a possibility for such, when it has to be tested to see if it's worth saving? Aren't there other items that are well-known that could be provided without having the estimator have to go around and take a lot of time, wasting his time figuring out? Well, that's historic, that's not...
No, no, let me see, first of all, the estimator won't waste his time, okay? Elements in the building that are artifacts are very easily to determine, right? There's mint in the top, there's definitely woodworking, there's cast iron, there are beautiful stained glass windows, there's the origin, there are a lot of elements in the building that are artifacts, that the estimator, in a blink of an eye, right? Will know what to do, right? Plus, you'll get instructions from the committee, saying, "This is what we deem to be historic, and this is what we want to salvage." We also have a village historian, right, who would participate in this process.
Well, why hasn't he already participated in terms of providing information so that a cost estimator can do his job without wasting the village's money?
He's not gonna waste his time, yeah, first of all...
I'm sorry, waste our money.
He's not gonna waste the money, I'm sorry to say, I disagree with you.
Fine, we can disagree. The other point that I have to make, was, why we're not the RFPs online? This RFP in particular. Why can't the villagers make their own review of that? And why can't they see the proposals? Why are we here shooting in the dark as to what you guys and this lady are talking about? Why must you vote tonight when we have not seen those things? Now, I know last night, I wasn't there, but I heard you, trustee Trevino, said, "Well, people can foil it, or doesn't foiling cost the village money? Shouldn't it be transparent? Shouldn't those be on the village website? And if so, why not?"
Well, wait, that, that wasn't the end of the discussion last night at all. And the determination made at least by the trustees who were there was that we have to repost those and make sure they're available. They're available on a certain website, which is public. But to make it more convenient to the residents, we wanted to have them posted in some way on the village website, so that people could examine them. That was the conclusion of the discussion last night. The conclusion of the discussion last night was not, "Let the residents foil it." That was not the end. The end was, "Let's find a way to make sure we post those on the village website so they're available for public review before the Board of Trustees meetings." That was the conclusion by the trustees that were there last night discussing that issue. And trustee Trevino was not urging a foil or FOIA as the only way to get this. He just started the discussion by mentioning that. But he was not offering that as a solution. And he certainly was joining us when we were suggesting there should be a way to make those easily accessible to the public, not to tell them it's on the contractor bulletin website. We thought that was an inappropriate message to send to the residents. Whereas, if we posted significant RFPs on the village website, they would be easily accessible to the public. That was the conclusion of the discussion.
Is it not, then, a reason to postpone any vote? Because what you're talking about is the present and the future, not from last night to tonight. Well, I didn't know that, what you just said, and there were very few people at that meet and greet, as you know. Isn't that enough reason to postpone this vote for at least to the next board meeting? Thank you. Thank you. Any others? Please.
I'm getting in the middle of voting yes or no for item number three, but just to get a little clarity, because it seems to be conflicting information. If you did vote for item number three to pass tonight, what is then required to actually spend that money? Is there another vote? Who signs that $69,000 away? Because trustee O'Brien was saying that we're not spending the money tonight. Yes, we're not spending it, but if you vote item number three, what is required after that to spend that money?
Ministerial task.
Excuse me?
Ministerial task, nothing else. Authorization is given. $69,000 can be spent at that point.
Yes.
Authorization is given to have the work start and to have that money paid to Westerman. What remains is ministerial task, getting the billings, paying the checks, that kind of thing.
Yes.
Or authorization makes the money available.
Okay, that was my understanding. It just became unclear from how trustee O'Brien was phrasing.
Yeah, I was, I was, are you clear now? So it's approving the cost estimator, but not spending right now. It's only when engaged or disengaged. So I think it's clear now.
Frank McFadden, 141 Hampton Road, Garden City. I'm also the chair of the Mayor's Committee on Programmatic Use and Cost Analysis. Firstly, last night we had the third of five town halls. This is Elder Pluit Hall, in which we had an extensive discussion on two aspects of the topic of the interest to the Board of Trustees. First, we talked about partial demolition and then we talked about facadeism. Thank you for the trustees who were able to show up last night and for the trustees who are not because of the conflict. Please accept the committee's apologies. We were under pressure to make sure we got the committees and these hearings done as promptly as possible. What is apparent to us, which may not be in your experience, but there's really a limited number of places where there are large venues and evenings in which they are available. We do have, and that's why we wound up with the date that we had last evening. So again, apologies for the conflict. We do have two other town halls coming on November two and that of the vow of demolition and November sixteen, right before your next board meeting, which is an open meeting, a topic of which we would be happy to spend time working with you on if you have any preference as to that meeting. Let me talk really, so we have a baseline potentially for this discussion as to what occurred last night. Last night we had experts in, on two aspects. One, the aspect of partial demolition, and two, the aspects, aspect of facadeism. What we found was facadeism has been around since the inception of this process beginning thirty years ago. It's not new. It was, however, originally associated mostly with private developers who merely wanted to be the king of the front of the building and then a massive structure behind. It wasn't until much later that in fact we saw the facade concept morph into a public concept. Originally, and as trustee Kelly echoed back in the spring, there were many requests for a facade and a rec center behind, rec center, loosely defined or undefined. But we approached all of that from a very disciplined process. There is a myth that we have spent ten months on adaptive reuse and only little time on facadeism. Let me address that myth. Let me put the facts to that myth. We began talking about demolition, the first part of facadeism, at our first meeting. We set a group together led by John Martin, who began the process of talking to demolition experts, first finding them and then discussing that with them. That process began in March, after the two-month delay that was necessitated by the engineers going in and telling us the building was sound. But beginning in March, we had an outreach to various developers, students, various demo experts, and began that process. It was a difficult process because most of them did not want to talk about demolition unless they were paid. Nonetheless, we persevered. During that timeframe, because we did not have any guidance from the legal committee yet as to what were permitted or non- permitted use, we couldn't really define what the project might have been. So we made a choice that said, let's level set for all the resident, particularly the new resident, who might not have had the thirty years of experience that many of us have had as to what was going on with St. Paul's. What did we do? So beginning in March, we looked through every ordinance, every document that is held by Karen Hall. We looked through every garden review. We looked through every report, whether it was from Tomasetti or from Triple B or from Iron Horniati. We made a list of every resident request and use the building. That took a considerable amount of time and we presented that in June at the town hall that we had called the Historic Use Town Hall. At the same time, we were looking at partial demolition, which is the aspect closely associated with facadeism. The irony is, of course, many people said, all you did was spend ten months looking at permitted uses for adaptive reuse. That's a fallacy. Why is it a fallacy? It's a fallacy because all of those permitted uses, every one, is equally applicable for adaptive reuse and facadeism. Because the only difference between them is one in which you used to prevent available space and one in which you built a new building behind. But the permitted uses, which is our focus on historic basis, was what we did from March until now. There was no work on adaptive reuse. To say so is mistaken. When did we start on historic, adaptive reuse? We actually started in August. And why is that? Because from the January meeting in which trustee Kelly and I and others of the legal committee began talking about the permitted uses, we didn't get a final permitted use until August. It was in August that we began looking at adaptive reuse. Now, in contrast to that, beginning in June, based on our promise at this podium that we would look at facadeism, we began looking at a rec center behind. In fact, my friend Don McLeod gave us several good ideas, which we incorporated into plans that were developed by the end of June, early July. The plans, similar to, but not identical to, the Donny Hockey Turf Field, something which you've all familiar, something that now is four or five years old, were then prepared in plans in early July, way before, way before any plans were begun on adaptive reuse. So the process of facadeism began in January. We listened to the board. We began thinking about rec departments. We began working with the head of FABGC and other helpful people like John Schwiger as to what they saw as facadeism. And we started to pencil it in behind four different facades. What were those four? One was the east-west front facade. We called that the "I". One was the front facade and just the east wing where the tower was. You demolished the central chapel and the west wing. That was called the "L". Then we looked at just taking out the middle of the structure, the chapel, that was the "C". So we had the "I", the "L", and the "C", all of which we had begun looking at for quite some time before. Then, because of the engineering report, we knew that there was some difficulty in to find a less expensive facade option. We looked at C sub one, which is taking out only part of the central area of the building, an almost identical plan to the Donny plan of a few years ago. At that time, we began putting more particular designs in there, which we showed last night. Those were a rec center, broadly defined. Those were a track, a turf field, competitive competition turf field, under a Moynihan roof, again suggested by Don and some of his friends, which we were happy to do. And then we looked at adding a performance center. Let's be clear. All of us have done renovation projects, minor or major. In the process of deciding, do you want the "I", the "L", the "C", or the "E"? Do you want a basketball court? Do you want a turf field? Do you want a performance center with or without a track? All of those are the things that begin a process of decision-making. And that decision-making also comes up against the reality of cost. Cost helps define a project. In the house that I bought in ninety-two, it took us ten years to go through all of the projects that we wanted. In our pool, it took us decades to go through all of the different iterations of projects that we have there. No one is suggesting that either the historical presentation we made in June or the adaptive reuse we made on October twelve or last evening's facade projects are the definitive projects here. And the only reason they're not is because we've never put a number next to them. It's that reality. And what this committee has said is we will not promote any project unless we find it affordable. And we cannot tell whether that's affordable until we have different costs. You may want tennis courts. You may want a swimming pool, but if the swimming pool is twenty million dollars, maybe that's not appropriate. But we won't know that. So as to the myth of ten months on adaptive reuse, the facts align. It began in January. We have time where we spent talking to demo experts on partial and full demolition and we have a considerable amount of time where we spent trying to draw from the residents what they wanted behind that facade. We are in that process still. What's the question we get at the end of any presentation? Boy, that sounds great. What would cost? Don't know. And therefore, it ends the discussion. At some time, you need to make judgments and trade-offs. This committee, with the exception of one original member, made a promise that we would look even-handed at every option. If you were there last night, you heard from Tomasetti, both on regular demolition and on saving different historically valuable items, such as the mayor has mentioned. The village is entitled to know what those historical valuable items are, so they know what is the value of the items they're giving up to a potential demolition. We hopefully will have that for you on November two. But we will be prepared on November two, despite the lack of any information, despite all of our effort, to engage the FDEM group and all of their members to say, what would you like? The fact that we offered our financial help, the fact that we offered our engineering help, they have politely declined, and we accept that. We will make a presentation on demolition on November two that gives outlines of the cost and options of demolition. Our job is to educate residents and our job is to educate trustees. We have been available every Tuesday night. We have documents on our website and we are sitting on top of a treasure trove of documents that all of us went through from January, excuse me, February until June, that gives the whole history of what is available here at St. Paul's, right downstairs. So we are happy to share that with you, happy to save your time. We recognize you are all pressured, as are we. We are looking for a way to work together. It is a process. The process requires critical information. You cannot come up with a final plan because the residents won't know what the final plan is until they know what its cost is. And that cost could change fifty times. It is an iterative process, unfortunate but true. So we are available at any time, at your convenience, to talk about what we have done, when we have done it, and with whom we are doing it, because we are outreach-ing every night. But let's not have any more of this ten months of adaptive reuse and nothing on facadeism. It is quite the reverse. Mr. Mayor, I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions?
Sorry, I have a brief comment. I've heard tell before that the First Street community would like to know what historic artifacts are that we might salvage. So we have twice, our Historical Society, I'm starting to put that hat on right now, have asked to go into the building to inventory the current condition of the artifacts. The answer? No. It is proposed that we could clean the interior of the building minimally, getting rid of construction debris, so we could visit the inside of the building and do such a thing. The answer? No. It's not helpful. I can't tell you what we could save. We have salvage agent who we spoke to, more than once. We can't go in. How are we supposed to tell you what we're going to salvage, our recommendation for what we might salvage, if we can't go in the building? And how can, how can we go in the building if it's littered with construction debris? That's my thought.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Commissioner Jackson, with the condition of the building now, if there was an emergency and also to chief, are you able to go in the building?
From my understanding, from orders from the previous votes minister, that it would be, you probably have to carry emergency services who have special gear. Firebomb though also has special gear, but we call emergency services, I think, with the other, Nassau County emergency service, I think, with the other buildings in the Vaney County, that may be hazardous, I'm sorry.
Depending on the situation that's presented to us.
So if, I'm just curious, since it came up, if, if there was, if it was cleaned up, would you guys be able to go in there?
We're able to go in there now because of our equipment.
Okay.
But we don't have one without protective equipment on.
Okay, so you have that equipment?
Correct.
But the police do not have that equipment?
No, you're not.
So God forbid there was a real serious situation, we're not even going?
In most cases, yes, we would be able to go in. I mean, sometimes I have to make a call.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
For the audience first, please.
Robert Destlatti, 32, Brixton. Thank you for this discussion, but I'd like to reflect back on something the mayor said about the cost and the process. If you look at the report that's on the agenda here in detail from Westerman, it says the $69,000 is broken down over a series of payments and one of the first things is Architectural Guidance and Stamping Report. I'm not sure what a stamping report is, but that's also using a firm that they work with, the COBA, Architectural Firm. So it's not like they're going out there and just, here's $69,000, throw us back a number, boys, you know? It's a process. So eight, $10,000 is just for Architectural Guidance, Structural Evaluation and Scheme to Support the Facade, $8,000, Environmental Hazard Sampling and Report, $8,000 with another firm called Airtex, Mechanical Evaluation and Energy Analysis, $10,000, Scheduling, Attending Meetings, Westerman himself and their firm, of course, estimating Westerman. But my point is, it's phasing and it's a process. It's not just, come on, give us a number, quick, quick, hurry up, and we all like hang up the phone and disappear from planet Earth. We are involved. They're going to look at all the plans, they're going to look at all the facades. And then why can't they put a number together that says, you know, what do you call it? Preservation and all the adaptive reuse, here's the number with the theater, here's the number with a pool, here's the number with a garden. with a pool, here's the number with a garden. How hard is that to understand? And let me tell you something, when the final number comes out, it's an estimate. And when it comes off like a million over here, or a million over there, when you're talking 30 million, 20 million, whatever the number's going to be, everyone's going to round that number up before you know it anyway, right? Oh, it's 29 million, so everyone started talking 30 million, right? So it's an estimate, okay? We can't worry about some of this. In the terms of construction and engineering and an architectural review like this for a massive project, these guys do this all the time. It's an estimate, okay? We can't dwell in the minutia and the weeds after all these years, okay? We've got to get moving. When I saw 70 days, I almost fell off my chair, okay? 70 days, that brings us into January. Oh, and what about holidays? And what if there's another pandemic thing, you know? That brings us into January easily. So why can't we say, you know, a vote that says, no spending, you know, no, to commence for another, you know, 21 days, until all details, who fit in, and everybody else, give us your last little request, spend, cannot commence for three weeks. And then we start, they're still phased out here. It's still phased, okay? So, and they say they work very closely with their clients. That's what they do, that's what they specialize. That's why you guys chose me. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Will Elise, 20 Palatiras. I've been working on these plans for a while now, I'm pretty tired. But I just want to say a couple of things. I've been doing this for 40 years, I've now retired. And had I not retired, I wouldn't have been able to take on this task, because this has turned into a full-time job. There's all this implication that, you know, you've turned this around so quickly.
Thank you.
No, it's okay. I've committed to do it, and I did it. So let me just clarify some of the stuff I've done. The adaptive reuse, as Frank described, started when it started, not before. And then we accelerated the effort in order to get something that we could look at, something that we could put our teeth around. Since then, that has gone through three iterations of changes. It's already changed, Mary, since the high school presentation that you witnessed. And as Ryan pointed out, we've included now the sports requirements that have come in. There are a series of options. Yesterday, for the first time, the pool was resurrected. It's always been a non-starter. It has always been there, but I've been told not to go there. And now, all of a sudden, there's interest in a pool, fine. That would have a price implication, in my view. Every other change that we've done, for example, the sports that we've added within the adaptive reuse, has not affected the price one iota. In terms of facades, Mary, you actually quoted me, I said snippets of information I received. I have not received any information from the facades, and I have not received any information from the demo people. However, I have heard what they wanted, and I interpreted it as best as I could yesterday in those plans, as I explained. However, that's not going to be the final roof, that's not going to be the final wall, but the price will be very, very close to what's estimated based on that. And that's very important. In those 40 years I've worked, never, never have I seen a process where the minutia is celebrated as it has been in this room. I'm sorry, and I say it with the greatest respect. There's a series, there's a process. And it's been that way since I worked in the Far East. In Europe, there's a name for the estimator, he's called the quantity surveyor. And the QS, as he's known as, is a vital part of this exercise. The US has less of that QS tradition, but they have estimators nonetheless. And the role of the estimator is to take the plans, and during those 70 days, which is a long period, but it's an important period, we go through all the options, all the nuances. And if we were to put a pool here, what would that be? And how much more to put a theater? And it's not going to be that theater. It'll be a different theater, it'll be a different pool, it may not be either. It may be sports. I don't know what it would be. But they can price, they can price. The drawings are detailed enough for pricing, particularly with 70 days of review and explanation. And I'm happy to volunteer for that role of the estimator, too. The same for facades. And by the way, Don McLeod called me to compliment me on the plans, so they couldn't have been that way off. And we intend to do the same thing with demolition. By engaging the estimator now, he's on board. He doesn't have to start tomorrow. Once we get all the full information from the demo, et cetera, that's when he should But the fault on any deficiency in the documentation that's been given on the RFP has been from lack of information from Red Garden City residents who are passionate about this project. And I'm trying to restrain, refrain from my own emotion, because it's a very emotional issue. I bought my house 30 years ago, and that was the year that the sell-ups imposed. So it's been here forever. And I'd like to see a result. Thank you.
Well, I just, on behalf of all of us, I want to thank you for your wonderful report. I mean, it's fantastic. And I know it's been a full-time job, I'm sure you're late at night, but you're doing a terrific job on behalf of all the residents, and you can't thank you enough. It's been terrific. And on top of that, you're really smart, and you've been there and done that, so it's really helpful. So thanks.
Yes, sir. My name is Brian Devity, Washington Avenue. I was mayor in 1992 and negotiated the purchase of the property. I'm chairman of the first mayor's committee, but we worked for almost three years, resident professional symbol today, in trying to figure out what to do with the building. What I learned during that process and thereafter was the need for information, just as you all expressed this evening, that you would like to have more information, or more definitive information, or even final information, before engaging a cost estimator. I think if you listen to all the professionals here, there are no two more articulate than Frank and Will. The process is one that the professionals know how to do it. And they do it in projects like this all the time. So that the need for absolute certainty as to what needs are going to be, or can't figure out the cost until you get to it, I understand. But I think in deference, you have to listen to the professionals to do what they know what best to do. And I urge you to do that. That doesn't mean that the information flow stops or is interrupted. It continues, as Frank has explained, as Will has explained, and the mayor has explained. So I ask you to search your hearts and do what the professionals know how to do, and move this, let us move forward to resolve this issue. I'm not getting any younger. And I don't want to come back 30 years from now. But I think it's very important that we proceed the way that professionals know best. So I thank you very much for all your time I've been there, so I know what you go through. But I think in this particular instance, the professionals should weigh, especially since you're curjelling the cost of funds for this estimate, you have that control. But I need to slow this down. I don't know if the other subcommittee members can last either, because they've been working, some of them, five days a week. So I ask you respectfully to follow what the proper procedure is. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jeanette McCallum, and I live at 123 Now Road. I have two observations after attending many meetings. One is, in the scheme of things, $69,000, when we spent $2 million on a roof that really didn't happen, something's off. And $69,000 is to help us get correct costs from the beginning for the plan. That's that. The other observation is that what I hear is a board who is lusting for information. And on this side of the room, there are all these people who have the information, but want to share it with you. It's totally clear. It seems that the one thing that's not set is a date. And perhaps, by the end of today, everybody can look at their calendars and say, this is when we can meet. You could have the experts come, you could have the people who do have the information, you could have a list of questions of what you want to know about, and sit down and do it. That's what I would be cross as resident of the village. Just get together, do it. That's it.
I'm Don McLeod, of Westbury. I think, Jeanette, had the solution right there. Part of the problem is, and Mr. Cole had the referee of discussion between Frank and I last week, is, I think Frank and I both agree, the 10, he refers to it as reiterative process, the 10 months where the board of trustees are eight months, we're not allowed to attend meetings, would have educated them so that they could be more comfortable in the process. Cosmo, you have, Mr. Mayor, you have incredible knowledge about this, but a lawyer doesn't, a federal prosecutor doesn't. And going back and forth and listening to the discussions would have been incredibly valuable. Frank, do you agree on that?
What do you got?
So what I, what I, I'm sorry. So what I think, I didn't realize there was any pressure based on election cycles, that's the first I hear of it. But I think if you guys spend the next month with this group, kick this down the road, you'll be a lot more comfortable, that you're able to do your fiduciary responsibility. And not having been at all these meetings, and I would say, Frank, I've been in quite a few years?
Yeah.
Having been in quite a few of them, the process of listening, the back and forth, was very valuable for me. Getting a report at the end of this is not going to help this group. You guys are going to need to get involved. But you guys are the guys signing the check. And if you're not comfortable, and it's going to take you four weeks or six weeks, just take the time. Thank you.
To remind you, Don grew up in our house. We've known each other a long time, and we had said we would be shoulder to shoulder on this phone to get going. Let me make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor. We have a date for a town hall on November 16, prior to the next board meeting. This committee will be available to any and all trustees prior to that. And on that evening, I would suggest, subject to what the trustees would like, that we have a summation of everything we've learned over the 10 months that we've done facades, over the three or four months that we've done adaptive reuse, and over the 11 months that we've done on demolition, so that we can bring back the experts. And in a single evening, that we will then advertise for all of the village residents to begin to see the difference between adaptive reuse, facades, which as I said earlier to trustee Mary Carter-Fonigan's comment, is really the difference between whether you have an old building, or the front of an old building and a new building behind it. But all the programs are going to be identical inside that, or some variation on that, I-C-E-L. Nothing but sheer. But we can then do a comparison, facades, demolition, adaptive reuse, in one evening, where the trustees can be there, ask questions before. We will prepare you to the extent that you want to be prepared going into that meeting. We will give you whatever documentation we have, as I said, don't forget, you're sitting on the mother lode downstairs. God bless Karen Altman for that. And that may be a way to help in resolving the need to move forward. I have been on this for 30 years, as I say each time, I've come up here after we moved back. I hope I'm not here for another curtain on this, I hope I'm here for another curtain on other things. But look, there's not been more dedicated group than this. And let's be clear, were this not the group who is before us on this trustee, it is not likely that we would be at this level of discussion on St. Paul's. And I can tell you that many of the people with whom I have worked over these 30 years were prepared last January to start a resident-driven process to address St. Paul's, independent of the board of trustees. But to your credit, although it took 10 months to get the committee formed, you did begin that process, and we've all participated in it. It is a time to come together. It is a time for you to get smart, for us to make you smart, and for you to make a judgment, along with our aid, to make the residents smart. This is an iterative, multi-phase, multi-year process, however it were, including them. Thank you so much.
Frank, that's the next one, suggestion, on November 16th, to have all three of them reviewed again and summarized again.
Well done.
And thanks, Don, for a free.
Summary meetings is definitely longer.
We have an EAP, but I'll see with the committee if we can reschedule if members insist.
Happy birthday, Larry.
Several months ago, the agenda was considering St. Paul's, considered a survey of the residents that would provide guidance to selecting the final uses. That survey seems to have died. Is it still possible to do it? And if not, why not?
There's no reason why we shouldn't have the survey, right? You should have a survey once we have more information. I mean, one of the basic concepts of the year in all night mode is, okay, we propose a concept, but the next question is, how much does it cost?
The survey will have to...
You have to have the cost with the concept.
The survey would have to precede any vote, because the survey will guide you toward the wording of the vote.
George, you have a design, right? You have an estimate, then you can do a survey. That's the procedure.
Should a survey precede that?
Survey on what?
What pieces of references are there? It would narrow the 100 uses that are out there to a much smaller number and focus...
George, as Will and some of the other professionals spoke, for example, let's say you have a scheme that has a pool, and that estimator comes in high, you change the design, right? You eliminate the pool, put something else there. We have a focus of uses that the residents want. It's what we call a wish list in my business, right? And we hope to get as many things on that wish list incorporated into the design, right? But again, it's a process, you go back and forth with the estimator, to understand, what can you afford, right? I don't know if we can afford 50 million or 1 million, I have no idea. Or even a million, I have no idea, right? I have no preconceived notion of cost of any of these schemes until we start doing the analysis.
I believe Ms. Wasaki has already addressed this, about the outreach that was done. So I'm not sure what you're looking for.
It's not narrowed down, though. My experience would be that there's dozens and dozens and dozens of uses that are being proposed, but we have not narrowed it down to any manageable number. And that's what I thought the survey would accomplish, so that village vote would be a narrower...
George, as a lesson student, I know what you're asking, so you may be more telling the decision, right? For example, if someone says, if it's $1 million for a pool, yeah, let's do it, right? If someone says it's $50 million, then it's a bad decision.
I have to, I felt the same thing, it's not off the table, we haven't discussed that. The question of how do we get down, everyone seems to agree it's got to be an up-down vote, we have to stay away from three, how do we get to the two? I don't think a survey's, you know, off the table, we'll be talking about all those...
It's not off the table, maybe the survey has certain points, right? Maybe the survey has certain points, right? We need information on the rock, so...
What are you trying to do on the 16th?
16th is essentially a summary meeting of all the different concepts that have been proposed, right? That's what Mr. McDonough just said.
But you're going to...
Summary meeting is a compilation of all the discussions we've had regarding adaptive reuse, facadeism, and demolition.
You think you'll have it narrowed down to the end of this, that evening?
I don't think we're going to have it narrowed down. Instead of a thing of that, pretty close to what we have right now. We have a lot of information. Yeah, I mean, right now, right now, we're at the point where you can take the voice for adaptive reuse and facadeism, like I said, demolition is very easy. And get the cost estimate lined up and started so you can start doing the research, right? And then by the time, don't forget, it takes 70, 70 days to do the estimates. So it's a process you're working with, as Mr. Laszlo said, and the proposal. The estimate has to work with the client. We're the client, right? The residents and the village are the client, right? We have to make sure that we understand that. It's a process we have to go through. And unfortunately, I have to say, you know, as somebody pointed out, we have attorneys, we have finance people. This is my business, right? As Will's been doing for 40 years, I've been doing it for 40 years as well, right? We've won awards for this kind of stuff. So again, the process here is extremely slow. As I said, the climate sector is sort of a big gun, right? Okay, we've cut through all this nonsense and gotten the information. We need information. We need people, the professionals, to be engaged so we can get the answer to the residents. We have a responsibility to the residents. That's what I feel. I have to get this information out to the residents so they can make a proper decision. And I think we're doing, I think, I have to say another thing. We have the best people on this planet, on this committee. They're fantastic. I mean, I can't pick a better person than Will to be the architect, or Georgia Ward to be the engineer, or Brian Gummel to be responsible for construction. These are gems. These people are gems to our community. And I have to say this, I understand that how professional they are and how they've kept me to this task for such a long time. And everybody is getting tired of this, right? We want to get to the end. Thank you.
You need to kick them...
Sorry, sorry.
You could have kicked a little butt on the way.
Well, I have to be diplomatic. I can't kick everybody's butt, but I would like to kick a few butts.
Hi, I'm Kathy Wasaki of the show. I arrive at the Orla and I was a soul string. First of all, we could have, I mean, you said like we don't know what we're doing, but we do. There are like major shuns that we could get price, your cost for, which would help us determine whether that's what we want. We know a lot of people want the Performing Arts Center. A lot of people want, oh, we don't know what we wanted. The next option was two basketball courts in lieu of the performing arts and the garden, courtyard, garden. If we knew the, they're like, it's like you fill in the blank. Like you either want this or you want that. How much is it? Take away, and if the performing arts area is too much, then you could put in a basketball court and see if that would be more reasonable for the residents. And in terms of not knowing what's in each room, we don't care what's in each room. We know, like on the one floor, the recreation department will come and they'll bring all their programs. We don't care whether they have a dance floor, you know, dance in this room or whatever. It's, that's part of their, that's part of the program. And that will be determined as life goes on. And the floor, the rooms on the floor that might not be used right away, well, we're hoping this is going to grow and people are going to say, that's to be determined. We don't have to have anything filled. That, you just don't do that when you make something or when you install something for a customer. You don't just do it to the max, you do it step by step. It's a process. And we do have, and we would like to have a survey, but a survey does cost money. So...
The other thing is Kathy and I spent last Saturday morning on the St. Paul's skills. And we spoke to probably 25 different families that came over. And most of the time when we were there, the people that came to the, all the presentations were the children. And the same thing in the high school, the night that we had the meeting in the high school. If I can tell you how excited the high school kids were about the plans. I was, I was amazed. And the questions they asked and the enthusiasm they had. These young children that were coming over on Saturday morning were so excited. They're like, please show me this. What is this? How does this work? When can we get this? Well, how fast can you build this for us? And then we said, bring your mommy and daddy over. And every one of them brought their mommas and their daddies to her. And every, and mommies and daddies didn't necessarily want to be there, but they, they came and they talked to us. And they're like, tell us about it. And we showed them the papers. I have them in my car. I'll give them all to you. And they were very excited about it. And we got some nice complimentary emails thanking us. And the one question that did always come up was, how much will it cost? And all I can say is, we're waiting for the Board of Trustees.
But once again, we need to have someone, a cost estimator, to say, how much is the theater? How much are two basketball courts? How much is the garden? Then we can like pick and choose what would fit in best. So we need to know that. We can't say, and because we don't want...
It's not our plan.
It's not our plan.
You have to sit down with us. You have to come. Bruce has come. I haven't seen Barry come. Charlie, you haven't come. Larry, you haven't come. Gary, you haven't come to any of our meetings and sat down quietly.
And we've had, we've had lots of meetings.
And we've had, and we make ourselves available.
What's the latest accusation? I didn't attend one.
Any of our, any of our meetings are coming like one-on-one to learn.
Oh.
Come, come, let's come. We're willing to sit down and we'll bring cappuccinos, as Betsy likes to joke about. Or I'll bring a bottle of wine. So it's like, let's sit down and say, what do you want?
And it's interactive conversation instead of waiting every three weeks before you have to come back here.
It's not our plan.
Right.
It's what do the residents want and what do you think is best? So that you can put together what the residents want to vote on.
Because I know when I went to the, a meeting before COVID about what was going to be in St. Paul's, they just took over the, tore off the rap and they said, we're going to make a hockey field. And I thought like, oh, a hockey field. I thought like, oh, I must have missed the meetings when they took the vote. We don't want to be perceived like that. We want, we want to be perceived as asking everyone what he wants. This is a community center we're trying to build.
And it's for all of us.
And we need everybody in the community to help us decide what's best.
Kathy, you've done, you've had this job, and so Michelle, so there's a lot of information out there.
We keep trying to go to all these different affinity groups and invite them to come. And we do have a very good team here working and with us and professional and just hard workers. And we're trying to do our best and we need everyone to work with us. Can we get that agreement? Somehow like you'll be at a meeting with us and have an ongoing inter...
Not the big, not the big meetings. Come, talk to us.
We'll, we'll meet someplace where we find a room. We can't have it where we meet, Bruce. We'll have a, we'll have a meeting and have an interaction.
We'll put the drawings out.
Yes.
We'll, we'll...
And answer your questions right away. So we don't have to wait, you know, and then you say like, you can get it. We want to share our information, but we need you to be at our meetings so we can share with you with all of our, all of our professionals. And I think it will be to the benefit of all of us.
Kathy, Michelle, you have every trustee's email. Email every trustee and invite them.
Okay, and we, so we'll find, is that okay? Will you do that? Will you come if we find a room?
Are you going to serve Starbucks?
Yes. Maybe you'll take mine.
I can take care of it anyway.
Okay, so, but we'll do that. I'll find a room for all of us or find a date that's, that's good for everybody.
The one, you know, the one thing with the whole coming to meetings, I didn't know. We all showed up at a meeting and then we realized we had the open meetings law. So we can't all be there. We can't have a majority of the...
We want to meet.
Well, how many, how many can be there?
Four.
Four. Four, okay.
So, I mean, um...
Well, why don't you come with us on Saturday mornings when we're bringing the residents to talk about it?
Thank you, Michelle. Any other comments?
The board is marking this.
Yes, very briefly, Steve Bray again, still living in Cambridge, having a season now. I heard a couple of words that really...
Talking to Mike.
I heard cappuccino or I heard wine. FDEM would like to be part of this. Even if we can't say anything, we'd like to listen and we'd like to have some cappuccino. What do you say?
FDEM has been invited to every meeting since January.
And was I there, there last night? I was.
You were.
And you complimented us. You complimented us.
I wonder what they, I'm sorry.
This seems to be a continuing issue with whether, how many trustees could be at a meeting and whether it's an open meeting.
I wonder what they...
If trustees are there to hear, hear somebody talk and they're not there to make a decision or to, or to conduct the public business, they're there simply to listen to what's being discussed. The open meetings laws are not applied.
But that would assume we're going to say nothing, but it's unlikely.
Can you ask questions or curious?
You can ask questions like you would as a member of the public so long as you're not sitting as a body to actually make a public decision.
But if it's construed as a discussion, is incorrect. There could be, if we have a majority, if there's a discussion about an issue that we later vote on, it could be raised.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue. I mean, I don't want to meet with all seven of these people unless I'm required to by my electoral office. And I would like to set up a smaller meeting with a few trustees, sitting down with, I guess, Michelle and Kathy, just to figure out how it's come down to these particular selections and how the process unfolded. And if that could be explained to me and just one or two other trustees, I think that could be very helpful to me. Because the process seems to me to be a lot more open and fluid than was implied by Kathy's remarks just now. And it seems that you've gotten to a place which seems much more definitive than was my impression at a meeting I actually did attend at the high school. So I'd like to have a smaller meeting, a few trustees, and have a meeting with the two of you, if you're the two who actually are the vanguard of this.
No. And we can be with other people, and that's fine.
I just don't want too many people or else I won't be able to make progress.
Okay, but then will you share, wherever we meet with, wherever in our, in our committee we meet, will you share the information with the other people on board?
Well, we can meet with everybody individually. We're very open to meeting with you.
Oh, we have two groups separately.
And we'll have architects and engineers and, you know, and finance people.
Okay, I'll, I'll respond to your email with my suggestions.
And his dates.
Okay, we don't need to finalize the plan. Can we move on?
Any other comments? Zoom? On Zoom?
Hi, John Campbell. I'm Gilbert Rose. So this committee, and the people meeting, we need to do a better job of communicating what this entire process looks like. So that everybody knows what's going, where we are in the process, and what's necessary to narrow it down to a two-part vote. Right now, the current process seems to be that, well, occasionally we get the board a big request for money. And it's the most important thing that can possibly happen to unlock the next thing, which is also not particularly well communicated. We are, there is no way for, for residents and for the entire board, it sounds like, to see what all the downstream dependencies are on this cost estimation. Just kind of several versions verbally conveyed by various people on the committee. It's, it's not clear to me. And so I assume other residents who are not in the field, whether this is the only estimate we'll get, which would make it extraordinarily important and worth all the time in the world to get it right, or whether this is the first of dozens that we're going to get before we get to a vote. The, you've got to get to a two-part vote. That's the goal again. Not saving it, not demoing it. The goal is we get to a two-part vote. And an accurate dollar figure obviously is necessary for this two-part vote. I, I created a contract reporter account so that I can see the RFP, which by the way, should just be on St. Paul's reports. I shouldn't have created a contract reporter account to see the RFPs for the, for the village. But accompanying it was an 11-page or so PDF about adaptive reuse and a bullet point about facade. It is pretty obvious, regardless of how much time that it's been talking about it, that adaptive reuse is, is better made, if you will. So either A, work together to get all the decisions possible to reduce the possible outcomes down to two, then request a comparative analysis. It's kind of assumes that this is the only dollar figure we're going to get is the one you're voting on tonight. Or get a proposal like Mr. Salem said, on hundreds of options or in the options, whatever the number you deem right, to get it down, that helps you make the decision that gets it down to two. Either way, it is, we've got to get better about communicating what this process is. I think a couple of meetings ago, somebody asked about a timeline. Even if you don't know what the dates are, you should know what the dependencies are and what this, like, plan actually gets you to a two-part vote. I'd really like to see what gets us to a two-part vote and quit just hearing about the very next thing that's going to happen.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Westbury?
Frank McDonough, thank you for your comments. Let me just be clear. The implication or the inference, I think you wanted to be drawn on your comment that there are only plans on adaptive reuse and no plans on facadeism. And therefore, adaptive reuse is our question. The reason was, we were still in the process of talking to people about what facadeism was going to be. And we had those plans, and I said to you, perhaps you didn't hear that. We had original plans in June, early July, way before we had any adaptive use plans. So that you're clear, the plans that were presented in June were plans about historical use that could have been used either for adaptive reuse or for facadeism. But because facadeism is an I, an L, a C, like C, it was not worth the time and effort to go through that iterative process and confuse the RFP. Please do not continually suggest that the adaptive reuse is a preferred opportunity. That would be inaccurate. Our committee has promised and even handed description of all three items, of all three options. If you were there last night, I think you would have seen that. But at no time on our word, Mr. Mayor, if anyone in our committee preferred adaptive reuse or facadeism, in fact, in the earliest meeting we had, there were more votes for demolition than any other item. So I just want to clarify that. Thank you so much.
Any more comments?
I agree, Mr. Campbell, we need to have some type of timeline. As Chair of the Subcommittee for Finance, I can give you no timeline until we get the cost estimates. Thank you.
Any other comments on Zoom? Ken?
No.
Yeah, actually, I would respond to those last two. Sorry, John Campbell again. So I did not say that, that all that was worked on was adaptive reuse. I said that that seems to be better made. It was certainly better presented than the RFP. Secondly, in terms of the timeline, you don't have to tell me that it's going to happen by January 2nd. You can tell me that it takes 50 days to do whatever the thing is that comes after. Or maybe you can't tell me that it takes 50 days to do it, but you should be able to tell us, the board, the residents, what this process looks like, what those dependencies are, and, and hopefully, how long they take. But I can take almost anything more than the, the very next thing, which is what we've been getting.
Thank you. This is not a St. Paul's committee meeting.
He's addressing the committee, so I just didn't respond to that. We did give the mayor and the trustees a timeline. And it's three to four weeks, three to four weeks after we get the cost estimates. We did give a timeline. Thank you.
This is a Board of Trustees meeting. This is not a St. Paul's committee meeting.
And it's on the topic of whether you should spend money on the...
Yeah, it is, it's an agenda item that's being discussed. Any more comments? Okay, let's, let's move on. Let's continue with tonight's regular Board of Trustees meeting. And the approval of the minutes of the previous Board of Trustees meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting? Article 13, 2022. I have a motion. One favorite? Okay, how many more can you consent on?
Formal agenda.
Oh, sorry, formal agenda. Formal agenda. I'd like to make some, uh, reappointments to some of the boards and commissions. I will read all of them and then ask for a motion at the end. All of these terms expire on April 4th, 2022. To reappoint, reappoint Sean O'Brien as Member of the Architecture Design Review Board for terms to expire April 7th, 2025. Number two, to reappoint Elizabeth M. Bailey as a...
Number two, to reappoint Elizabeth M. Bailey as a member of the Department of Advisory Board for a term to expire April 6th, 2026. Reappoint, number three, reappoint Lauren Franseca as a member of the Planning Commission for a term to expire April 7th, 2025. And number four, reappoint William P. Carey as a member of the Board of Commissioners of Cultural and Recreation Affairs for a term to expire April 6th, 2026. Do I have a motion to approve these appointments?
Sure.
We have second? All in favor? All right, motion passes. Okay. Now, if you want to consent on?
Yeah, with the exception of number three.
So now we're moving on to the consent calendar. And is there anyone who wants to move ahead from the consent calendar for discussion?
Where to get that? So approval without number three. Approval is needed.
So move. Second.
Now item number three. I think we need to, to those one, Mr. Jesse Chester. Obviously.
Regarding item number three, I need your motion.
I'll second.
No, this is for the number three is discussed. Number three is passed out.
You can move the motion back and move again. And then there's a vote on.
I have a question.
Sure.
Being that we can award it, but not pay for it yet, does this need to be rewarded so that everyone understands that? In other words, there...
What happens is, once the motion, once the, if, should the motion pass? Should the motion pass, as trustee Kelly stated, it is a ministerial act as to how and when it gets implemented.
Okay, all right.
If there is, and candidly, once you have money in a budget, as we have had for years on end and have not spent it, the most important consideration is the determination as to when the contract is engaged and when the work is done. Because there are many steps that need to be taken in preparation before the engagement and commencement of any work.
That was my understanding. So if that's clear for everybody, I'm good.
So he's got a call vote, you know? I'm in motion. You get a call vote.
Does it have a vote on number three?
Yep. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
I'll say opposed to defer to Montage's previous grant. Frank, his plan from November 16th, put it back on the 17th, I'm all in favor of that.
What you would have to do under Robert's rules of order is to call a point of order in order to amend it. That would be what you would want to do.
And I would call a point of order, then put it on the number 17th after the year 16th.
I'll second that.
Is it gonna be the same?
Procedurally, what would happen is if you call a point of order on a motion, you then have to resolve that point of order first, which is the vote on. If you're calling a point of order and you're making an application that this be deferred until the next board meeting, we would vote on that. That would be the protocol.
Vote on this. We're ready to vote. We're ready to vote.
Any trustees, I understand, can put anything on they want theoretically, so somebody can put it back on to the 17th if they want to.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
But we don't need to spend any more time. Would we put this off for the 17th?
Yes.
You have a motion?
You don't have that.
No, not today.
You just...
This one?
Just put it on again on the 17th.
All right.
Can we also count on the record, identify who voted for and against this? I'll refer. Make sure everybody's identified. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for another item regarding my suggestion earlier regarding expanding the committee to be a board committee. Any second.
A second.
All in favor? All right, so I made a motion to suspend the rules to address a resolution that I was suggesting earlier to expand the committee to be a board committee to, um, to be more involved in the process.
St. Paul's Committee.
St. Paul's Committee, yes, to be a board of trustees committee.
What does that mean? How does that...
That's a conference of the mayor's committee or something?
It's a mayor's committee.
Yeah, what are the...
Will we do, replace the mayor's committee?
Well, it would be the same committee, supplemented as a board trustees committee, so we...
A separate committee?
No, it's the same committee, the same group.
So you want to add, excuse me, you want to add trustees to the mayor's St. Paul's Committee?
And make it a board committee, correct?
What do you mean by make it a board committee? That I don't understand.
Because right now, as a mayor's committee, it's a group that's reporting only to the mayor. They've looked on the liaison on side out. But if we have a board trustees committee, it will help us to all be involved and the report will come to the entire board, which frankly, I think it should have been from the beginning, but it was not.
You're getting into a problem that you have been trying to deal with, you know, for months. And that is, if it becomes a board committee, how is the board gonna meet as a committee without having a public meeting?
I think we should, we will have public meetings. And that is, will resolve the, any concerns with the open meetings law. It will keep our, the whole community more involved and the trustees informed.
I think the committee is working. The committee is very well involved, right? This is a mayor's committee. I have 28 residents involved. We have a mayor's liaison group that responds, some trustees participate, some don't. I can't control that. Right? So again, by having a board committee, I don't understand how it works with the mayor's committee. If the trustees want to become members of the mayor's committee, yeah, that's okay. I'll accept that.
Do you understand what I'm requesting?
I'm not quite sure what the, how the mayor's, how the board committee fits with the mayor's committee. I'm not sure how that would work.
Would like the St. Paul's Committee, that is now a mayor's committee, to become a board of trustees committee.
I don't see that as happening under the bill of law, quite candidly.
I'll ask, is there some reason that can't be done with a vote of the majority of the board? I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do that.
I think we need to discuss this a lot from, I'm not sure that's in the...
The next problem is, is if you have a board committee, does that mean that no work occurs by the committee unless all of the board members are present?
I mean, mayor's committees do work without the mayor president. No, I don't think they do.
No, no. What happens under the bill of law, the mayor has the authority to establish a board commission, which he did. The same situation occurred with the fire safety committee, which I was on. And trustee, in that case, it was Deputy Mayor O'Brien, the mayor, was on that committee, albeit at that time, it was not a trustee. That committee met and the subcommittee met. But none of the other trustees attended. In this particular case, since September, all of the trustees, at their own leisure and according to their own schedule, have the opportunity to attend any and all meetings of the St. Paul's Committee. Functional, if you're looking to say that it is a board committee and it can only do work when all, or quorum is present, it'll be dysfunctional.
That's not what I understand the proposal to be. I understand the proposal to be that the existing St. Paul's Committee becomes a board of trustees ad hoc committee with specific goals that they have to meet. And that's my understanding of the proposal that's being made.
Well, as counsel, can we assert his premise that, how do we go without achieving that goal, that that's the goal?
I don't know. I don't know. I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure what you're trying to accomplish. The mayor has a right to appoint a mayor's committee. I'm just not sure what you're trying to accomplish by, quote, making this a board committee and how the, what the interaction is supposed to be between mayor's committee and the board. Do you want to have the mayor's committee submit reports in a moment?
Well, no, let's not do this. I don't think we should get into the details now. I would suggest, first of all, it's my understanding, board of trustees of villages in New York State can set up ad hoc committees for any specific defined proposal. And that's what the suggestion is. But I suggest that we just carry this over to the, we can decide if we put this on the agenda for November 17th. But I'd rather not go through all the details right now. I'd rather flesh this out in the meantime. And if we decide to bring it back on the agenda November 17th, we'll do that. And I think that's where we should leave this proposal, which I support, for tonight. I don't think we should try, at 10 o'clock, to try to craft out the details of this proposal and the transition from a mayor's committee to an ad hoc trustees committee.
So with your options.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking for any more comment. Table it. That means nobody else needs to address it unless there's a vote against my proposal to table it for the moment. I don't hear any opposition, so why don't we table that?
Is item three numbered for the 17th?
Was it voted out?
Item three, item three, item three was defeated, but any trustee has the authority to put any matter on the agenda theoretically, so anybody can put it on for November 17th.
So do you want to vote on the tabling of the committee?
Yes.
I withdrew. You withdrew? Yeah, I withdrew.
Not a generalities. This time, officially, dead items. Don't look for any assistance or comments on non-jedidics. Non-jedidics.
Paul Rockwell, 216, Kansas City, Garden City. I feel like I'm in a class A league or something. It's majors, it's little league stuff. I just want to follow up on the main avenue, re-greening the closing of Houston Road, what the status of that is. I understand the last screening we had, we're not meeting with the MTA, 3TC, trying to allocate funding. And I was wondering if we can do any resolution on that. And what we can do is make this thing move forward.
Well, we have no information, wait for information from the one or the three TC.
What now?
So waiting for information, right, from 3TC and Royal Road.
Is there any way of forcing that? I mean, did you establish a second meeting or follow up meeting? Because the road would let go.
We made requests. We're getting information.
The mayor made several requests from Allen Pascal to respond after our meeting, and we're still waiting to hear from him on that.
All right, the residents are...
Yes, I...
Three, four years now?
I know, I know. I know, frustrating.
I did their call.
And along the same lines, also with the dulling of the lights or blinking of the lights, is that something?
It's also been a look after.
They're all being actively worked on. We should have something to report in the near future. So we just don't have any update tonight. Thank you. That's all your work. Any other comments on non-jedidics, please?
Robert Vesta, 32, Berks City. I'd just like to follow up with Paul, because I've been working closely with him and several residents and several trustees on this Maryland Station Plaza area, if you want to call it that. And, you know, it's getting to the point of safety situation. I wanted to tell you that, okay? A, at night, it's dark. It's getting darker, probably, of course. It's still not safe across the streets. It's totally ridiculous. There's not a marked crossing anywhere coming up to that station. I know there's financial things going on, but I think we could do some temporary things to make it safe for pedestrians at night. It's really not safe. The other thing is that, you know, the residents that are not here to live in the area are really fed up with that situation, okay? Paul said it's four years since the trees were cut down, four years. And then what is adding insult to injury, if you want to pass this law when you meet with the railroad, is that as I commute to the city, I see that, you know, UBS Arena and Elmont Station went up, got started after Maryland, and is finished before Maryland, looks 10 times better than Maryland. The design is better. It's finished. And I'm talking finished, okay? Art is dragging out forever. People are really fed up. And good thing I'm not, you know, in that immediate area trying to sell a house, okay? My daughter happens to live on Houston, and good thing they're not selling their house right now. But think of all these people that have been trying to sell a house for four years. Is that going on? Okay, this is, this is a financial burden on residents. So I know that you can't push the railroad, but when you do get a hold of them, how to draw your back to, you know, bring some of these issues up with them that I mentioned, because I really think it's important. Property value, safety right now, there's things we can do now for safety without waiting to put in, you know, drainage and curbs and close up islands and things. We can do some safety things. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Robert.
My name is Fred Smith. I live at 10 Cambridge Avenue. I've lived in Garden City for 29 years, since 1993, when I came here to work at North Shore Hospital. This morning, I sent a copy of a petition signed by 63 residents to all the trustees. I hope you've read it. Also, with it, I sent a plan, a plan for the Nassau County Urban Coalition for this year. And our petition is that the, that the board trustees vote to rejoin the Nassau County Urban Coalition, where some of the board trustees left as soon as they had that opportunity, when the judge's order expired, that forced the village to join. I have it here. I can read it if you like. I can tell you I can read the names. They have the mask, and I occasionally cough, I have chronic lung disease. They have the mask and my actual cough. I have a chronic lung disease. I don't have COVID, but I'm a little higher susceptible than the average person, I think. So I don't know the procedure for asking you to consider this and vote on it, but certainly I think it's, some of the many people living in Garden City, maybe not all. But it's really, our argument is that it's a good neighbor act. We have other municipalities around us that are members. Hempstead, Oral Park, Menola, Scoot Manor, Town of Hempstead, and these unincorporated areas. And to leave, I think, was a bad gesture symbolically. That's unfairly, Garden City has a reputation for exclusiveness. And to join it means that we add our population to the larger population that the county distributes hedge funds to for various improvements in places like Hempstead. They really could use that help. We may not benefit from the funding, but I think we should do the neighbors' tour, the folks around us, especially those in, the neighbors directly like Hempstead, Elmont. So you have it. And is there anything else I need to do to find out what the follow-up is? Robert, any responses?
Well, I think we submit the petition and the warrant will take it under advisement. There are all kinds of ramifications to joining or not joining that group.
What are they, sir?
Well, it's too much to detail.
I didn't seem that complex. I'm looking up at the lead. It was very rushed. It was a special meeting, no agenda, really not publicly announced. And it certainly had the appearance of an elitist kind of action. We don't need this. This is not us. I don't think that should be our attitude. I don't think it's all that complicated, frankly. I've been looking at it a lot. I talked a lot with Anthony Lapinta, who was the Fair Housing Supply and Author, who worked very hard to try to make this successful. His report to the judge in this current lawsuit, which Garden City won, was really a kind of sad report about the non-cooperation that he experienced from the previous board. So I put that before you. I hope that at least that you'll consider, consider this and take it up for a vote at some point, okay? Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, thank you very much for that comment. I will look at this proposal of yours over the next few weeks. And I may reach out to Tony Lapinta and to discuss the background. And I'm looking at the obligations, if any, that will arise, the cost, if any, that will arise. I'm looking at the negatives for the village and the positives for the village. So at least for myself, I thank you for being here. I will look at this over the next few weeks. I understand that you might be moving on from the village, and I'm sorry to hear that. The loss of your voice and the loss of the voices of the Stratans earlier this year certainly created a loss for the village. And so I thank you for your comments here tonight. I wish you the best, and I appreciate you being here. Thank you. Thank you, trustee John. Any other comments on, what is, on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, so you're not asking motion to call the meeting?
Wait, listen?
Second.